Okay, I call to order the December 12th, 2019 meeting of the Moab Planning Commission at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. It's four items not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please fill out a public comment sheet that can be found in the hall. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have August 22nd and September 12th. Discussion about those minutes? Anything need to be edited, changed, or added, or discussed? If not, we can go ahead and have a motion.
Would you like to have a motion for both documents?
Sure.
I will move that we approve minutes from August 22nd, 2019, and minutes from September 12th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have approved the minutes, both August 22nd and September 12th unanimously. Okay, next thing on the agenda, we have a public hearing, and we're going to take the Walnut Lane public hearing first. So we have a public hearing and recommendation to City Council on ordinance 2020-02, approving a zoning map amendment for properties owned by Community Rebuilds at 140 South, 200 East, from R3 multi-household residential to C2 commercial residential, and at 150 South, 200 East, from C2 to R3.
Wait, so there are some folks in the hall.
Come on in.
So I want to wait until they get here.
Oh, that's the wrong one, isn't it?
It was the wrong one. I was gonna say, wait a minute.
Wrong one.
Point two.
So let me back up.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, let's start again. So if you would like to speak on the Walnut Creek?
Walnut Lane.
Walnut Lane. Please fill out an orange one. And if you would like to speak on the Community Rebuilds, please fill out a yellow one. Okay. Okay, let me start this again.
Okay.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing and possible recommendation to the City Council of ordinance 2020-01, approving a zoning map amendment for property owned by the City of Moab at 193 Walnut Lane, from R2 single household to two household residential zone to R4 manufactured housing residential zone, and amending the City of Moab official zoning map.
And just as a note, we switched up the agenda a little bit, so that this one is first, because we have an interpreter here, and we don't want her to have to stay all night. So that's why we switched it up. The next item will be the Community Rebuilds rezone.
Nora?
Oh, no, it's Caitlin.
Oh, yeah, so I'll present this one. Yes. So do I need to, do you need me to introduce myself?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Caitlin Myers, and I am the Senior Project Manager for the city, so I am the applicant on the behalf of the city, but I'm going to be presenting this. So the city owns property at 193 Walnut Lane, mailing address 250 and 280 Walnut Lane. Right now, it is currently split zoned. There are two parcels to be rezoned, and the north half, it's about 1.6 acres, is currently zoned R2. The southern half is R4. And we are requesting to rezone the two parcels so that they're entirely R4 and no longer So background, the city purchased this property in 2018 with the intention to redevelop it into affordable housing. Right now, it is currently a mobile home park. And so right now, existing on the site are 36 trailers. Originally, it was 38 trailers when the city bought it. And since then, they have removed two of the trailers because they were damaged by fire. And we plan to remove six more additional trailers that were vacant in January. So the city intends to redevelop it into approximately an 80-unit affordable housing complex. It'll be mixed income, but all de-restricted for local residents. And we are proceeding, we're releasing an RFP next Thursday to solicit master plan services so that we can start figuring out exactly what that looks like, but for now, we're just trying to work through entitlements. So surrounding uses on the site include single-family and multifamily residential, obviously, single-family in the R2 zone and the Park Drive neighborhood to the north, multifamily with the hoodoo apartments to the south, as well as the mobile home park that's also to the south.
Do you want to mention, because I know there are several residents here, and I know that's not the topic of this meeting, but do you want to mention what our marching orders are in terms of displacement and?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the city, one of the top goals for the city is to not displace any of the residents through this process. So when we're redeveloping it, it will be kind of a piece-by-piece, a bunch of phases to make sure that we don't have to displace anyone. So as we're removing those six trailers, that will most likely create enough space for the first phase of development, and we'll be able to move residents from their trailers into that apartment complex or whatever it is, and then we'll remove those vacated trailers. But through every phase of this process, the city intends to make sure that all of the current residents, as long as they're in good standing with the city and are paying their rent and are being good tenants, that they will have housing, as long as they want to continue to live at Walnut Lane.
Okay, I would like to interrupt real quick. Again, if you'd like to speak on the Walnut Lane issue, there are orange forms in the hallway that you need to fill out, and then we'll bring you on up to the microphone. If you would like to speak at the Community Rebuilds rezone, if you could fill out a yellow form, that'll help keep me straight, because I'm having a hard time today. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hey Caitlin, quick question.
Yep.
As far as being good tenants, is that just following the terms of the lease with the city?
Yep.
There's nothing subjective in that at all?
No, so it's just, and the city itself is not managing that, that's falling onto the property management company that's managing that. So, but yes, as long as they're following the terms of the lease.
Cool.
Yes. So continuing on with this, going through the zone map change criteria outlined in Section 17.04.060 in the code. I can, let me pull up the questions. I just highlighted these really quickly. So first question, was the existing zone for the property adopted in error? And I think that it was likely split zoned in error. We can go back to the map if you want, but...
To the map, please.
Sure. So going to...
Map.
The first slide.
The first slide, of course.
So as you can see, on the eastern side, there's 200 north, that's kind of on the very side, and you can see pretty clearly that the zoning boundaries follow the center of the right-of-way on that, and it doesn't follow the property boundaries of the three parcels that are on Walnut Lane, one of which the city does not own, that is also split zoned, and then the two that we are applying to be rezoned tonight. So in part, we think that it's a zoning error, because split zones are not typically an intentional planning practice. And then going forward with the questions, we can keep the map up if you want, but there has not been a change in character on the site. It has maintained to be a mobile home park for a very long time. There have been some changes in character in the adjacent neighborhood, specifically with the development of the hoodoo apartments and the hoodoo hotel, and they're continuing with that project, and they're going to build another apartment complex and some more casitas. But in general, there haven't been any changes in character to the neighborhood, other than the hoodoo development. So next question is, is there a need for the proposed zoning within the area or community? I would say yes, the current, for two reasons. One, because the current zoning, the R2, the current uses on the site are not permitted in the R2 zone, specifically with the mobile home park. And so the city is currently out of compliance with the land use code, or with the municipal code with the current use. But as we're talking about redeveloping it later down the road, multifamily residential is also not permitted in the R2 zone. So I would say that there's a definite need for the proposed, also because there is a need for more affordable housing, and so that's one of the main goals with this project. Next question, is the proposed zoning classification compatible with the surrounding area or uses? Will there be adverse impacts, and can any adverse impacts be mitigated? The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding uses, because there is an adjacent, or there's a nearby mobile home park and a multifamily housing residential project. And we anticipate that this project is going to be a mix of housing unit typologies, but it's going to be a higher-density housing complex. There will not, I wouldn't say there would be adverse impacts, because we're talking about a use that is similar to the adjacent uses. But kind of leading into the next question, or a question further down, are there adequate facilities able to serve the development or the redevelopment? There are currently adequate facilities to serve the existing use on the site, but those will need to be improved a lot when the city proceeds with redeveloping the property, but the city intends to use the PAD or the Plan Affordable Development in order to redevelop that, and that, this will come back to you at that time. And so the city's planning on addressing any impacts for redevelopment later down the road. So just changing the zone right now is going to maintain status quo with the current mobile home park. And last question, will benefits be derived by the community or area by granting the proposed zoning? Rezoning the property will grant the city a higher residential density in the R4 zone for the affordable housing project. Additionally, PAD developments are not permitted in the R2 zone, and so by redeveloping it to R4, the city will be able to use the PAD on the full two parcels, instead of just using it on the front half. And it conforms with the provisions outlined in the general plan, specifically the goals and policies about affordable housing, and in the future land use plan, this area is designated as residential, so it'll follow the future land use plan. So finally, Nora has the motions up for you. I don't know if you have any questions, or if Nora wants to add anything.
How about if we open the public hearing, and then we'll ask questions? And go from there?
Great.
Okay. Again, if you'd like to speak to us about the Walnut Lane rezone, could you please grab an orange form out in the hallway? Fill one out. If you'd like to speak on the Community Rebuilds, grab a yellow one. Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing for the Walnut Lane rezone at 6:14 PM. I have four comments right now, and I'll call you up, and you can tell us what you want to think. I would like to keep our comments down to about three minutes, and you'll notice there's egg timers up on the table here, so if you tell us your name and flip over your egg timer, and then you can keep track of your own time. I'd appreciate that. Okay, Bruce, you're up first.
Thank you. I won't use the mic, because it breaks every time I use them. Question I have is, who should I direct this to?
Could you, would you mind stating your name?
Always.
Sorry.
Bruce Lauthen.
Thank you.
As it said on the card. Is part of this appears to be just for conformity, to make it the city legal in having a trailer park in this area. Is it also possible that we're thinking about the construction including modular?
Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have not decided that at this point. At this point, yeah, we haven't decided that at this point, and we are...
But that is a possibility.
So, Bruce, hi, I'm Joel Leneris. It is a possibility. We've looked at all sorts of different forms. We've looked at single apartments that are one building, multiple apartment buildings, different layouts. We've looked at bringing in modulators that we could put in, temporarily use those, change pattern later, move those...
Modular can be multiple stories and multiple wide.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're referring to like a park RV style, like a smaller RV trailer. We've talked about doing that. We've talked about being able to move those to a different location at a different time, as we, we don't know yet. And so we really are all over scanning doing this.
Basically just conformity. The second question is, where are you, you said you have essentially eight spaces that have been vacated, or you're about to vacate them. Where are those? Do you have, another, where's, approximately, where is the footprint you're planning to put something first?
So, right now, they're scattered throughout the park.
They're scattered.
And so we would have to move some around in order to be able to make the hole. But the hole could either be in the northeast corner or the southeast corner of the property that we own right now. So it just, we don't know, we don't have as much detail that you're looking for to this point. Right now, we're trying to get it zoned, so we can get a plan, so we can put out an RFP, so then we can determine what a master plan would look like.
I yield back my time.
Okay.
And just for your information, this is Joel Leneris, who is our city manager, if you don't know, but...
We have some work here.
I'm sure.
Okay.
And yeah, this is just to change the zoning. That's, it's the first step, and then other steps will come down the line.
And so we don't know what it will look like. We don't know what the construction will be. We don't know how many of anything that's going to happen. All we would like to do is change the zone so that we can put more appropriate housing in, in the proper places.
Yeah. As the applicant, the city, right now with the split zone, we can't even get it master planned, because what you can do on the front half, you can't do on the back half. And so we just need to get it all one conforming zone, so we at least have the ability to say, okay, now please lay us out a master plan for what we're trying to do.
A master plan that will correct, come back before the public, before it is approved at least one time.
Definitely.
Yes.
And it will require site plan approval, and who knows what else?
Every rule that applies to any developer who comes to the city applies to the city as well. We have to play by the exact same set of rules that we require developers to play by. So every step that someone else would have to do in order to develop this property, we will have to follow as well. We will have to bring back those plans for review, we'll have to bring them through Planning Commission, we'll have to get approvals through Planning Commission, and we'll have to get City Council approval as well. So every part of what we do will follow the same process as the general developer who would have this property if it was in private hands.
Thank you.
Okay. Josh? Just state your name and flip a timer.
My name is Joshua Grillo, and I currently reside in 250 Walnut Lane, number one. And you guys said there were six trailers that was vacant in January. I've been living there for four years now, and I'm just concerned on where you guys are going to, because I've heard from the maintenance guy, I don't know if he knows anything about this, but that my house and the following trailer and the next one, because all those ones have been evicted, and then the other two burnt down. I'm like, that's where those six trailers are, and so I was wondering, if that's the first phase of redevelopment, where am I going to be placed?
And it sounds like you would still be placed, well, go ahead, Joel.
And I apologize, like, I don't mean to take over.
No, that's okay.
And I know we don't normally answer questions in this format.
But I think we need to.
But this is like, our first opportunity to get a lot of information out, and so I apologize for commandeering your meeting.
No, that's fine.
No one will be displaced, who's, the only people who have been displaced so far are people who have not paid their rent, we've had to take legal action to protect our legal right. But if, as we make the pattern to create a position for us to build a building, if you're built, if you're living in that zone, we would reposition you in a different location. You will not be evicted from the property. You will be, you potentially could be relocated on the property until that first phase was completed, and then relocated to the first phase in order to build the next phases. But no one who is current on their rent, doing what they're supposed to be doing, is going to be displaced in order to create a hole.
Then, back in January, or back in, I think it was, had to be August or September, I did get an eviction notice, but it was because when I was paying my rent, the person that I was paying out there put the wrong address. They put the 291 or the farther, further up north, or further west, I guess it would be. And we cleared that up, and the cops were there to evict us and everything.
Okay.
So I want you to know that it wasn't, you're good.
Yeah. And as long as you're in good standing, you'll be fine.
You're okay.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginger?
Yes, that's me. Can I just sit right here? I just have a little...
Unfortunately, we do have people listening on the recording, which is the only reason, really, we use mics.
If you just want to take the microphone...
You can take it, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. There you go.
Well, I just was wondering what's going to happen to me. I own the home. My parents built the trailer park in the 50s, okay? And when it is rezoned, does that do something to me and my home?
In no way will it affect your property, as the rezone is for our parcel, we don't own your parcel, and so the applicant is not, application would not rezone that parcel that you're on.
Okay. That's what I needed to know.
So you're outside the black polygon, so yours, this doesn't apply to you.
Well, I'm okay for now.
Yeah, you're good, as long as you want.
Someone told me that I was the object of the last City Council meeting you had, but I want you all to know, I have not been asked if I would sell from anyone here.
No.
It's been hearsay, okay? And so I don't know if I would, I don't know, but I would appreciate it. I had a man call me just after my grandson died, and I said, I need a week or so, then can you come down and talk to me? And I haven't heard a word, so right now, it's up in the air.
Okay.
Well, we'd love to talk to you.
I just...
But this, this won't have any effect on your property, other than neighboring property to you.
Okay. Jim? Should have called you first, you were here early.
That's okay. Jim Nelson?
Turn the purple one over, so you'll have more time.
I own 292, and of course, you guys purchased the other part from my brother. I've been very apprehensive of selling, because these people have nowhere to go. Eight years ago, I proposed to move all 11 trailers out of property south of town. Of course, I've got all the equipment and stuff. They wouldn't have been out of their bed one night, you know, just for temporary. But the county proceeded to tell me that they wanted $10,000 a lot, impact fees, for me just to temporarily move them out there. Well, since in the last eight years, I've collected a lot of junk, but I've been offered to sell the court, and I turned them down. They think I flipped out. I says, you got any, what do you do with my people? And they said, well, we'll give them 90 days and start evicting. And I says, well, that's not for sale. And I still hold true to that, but what I'm here for is that if you do the zone change, you might as well do it all, do my court too.
Which property are you? Would you mind pointing that out?
I'm at 292, just...
The third one, yeah.
To the west, yes. And therefore, if you guys decide to purchase, I would work with you of trying to help my people. You know, like I say, I've got a 35-unit apartments, two and three-bedroom apartments. I was getting ready to send it off to the engineer and have it designed. And when she told me that, I just thought, well, I'm not going to borrow $120,000 just to give to you guys, when I'm not going to keep that out there on my property. It's commercial property on the highway, and it's where my construction yard is. And so I backed out of it, you know, and, but these people have been, they're just wonderful people. And sure, they have their hard times and things, and there's times I don't get the rent on time, and, but they're, I'm not one to turn them out. And so if you guys got plans that you would work with, or I can work with you, and like I say, I've got trailer pullers, I got all the equipment, I got track hoes, I got everything. And I was, I was going to temporarily move them out there.
Okay.
Build these apartments, and then move them back in, and then junk the trailers out, because they are, they're, some of them are not, not fit to live in, but these people, they take a lot of pride where they live. They ain't much, but they take a lot of pride.
So Jim, if you could get together with Josh and the rest of the folks at the city, and start talking about how you want to do that rezone, or if you want to sell to the city, that would be wonderful.
Well, if we can go ahead while you guys are doing yours instead of spot, let's go ahead and get that changed.
And we can't do it tonight, at tonight's meeting?
Right, because we have to do a public notice and all the legal stuff.
I don't know, I'm...
We'd be happy to work with you to get a rezone, if you wanted to come in.
Yeah. That's wonderful, thank you.
Well, I just want to let you know, I'm not going to turn them people out.
Thank you, Jim, that's awesome.
Thanks, Jim, you're awesome.
Thank you for your time, and we'll...
Thank you.
What I need to do, I need to see you.
Yep. Call the city, and they'll direct you my way.
Okay. What's your name again?
Joel.
Hello, Joel. Jim's my name.
Nice to meet you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, last up is Lisa. Come on up, state your name, please.
Either one?
Either one.
Okay, I'm Lisa Carter, and I'm actually one of the representatives of the neighborhood that lives to the north, so I am in that R2. And I, you asked me to check off, I'm concerned, I'm not opposed to this, because I do believe, having looked at some of that housing, that it needs to be developed. My concern is going from an R2 to an R4, and that neighborhood on the north end is pretty much R2, is single dwelling, single families, and I guess I just want to know, I know we're in the planning stages, and this is probably a little bit early for me to be speaking like this, but if you make that change to look at what contingencies might be used to mitigate more of a, a less abrupt R4 from R2 height, you know, putting a 30-foot building right behind my yard, that kind of stuff. And, and, you know, I'm more than happy, and as are my neighbors on either side of me, to be a part of this, because I think most of us actually believe in the project. It's just how do we integrate it with what's already there, which is predominantly in R2, all around it, except to the south.
So the city is, I mean, obviously, we're aware that it's, there's that issue, and being familiar with the property, the back line, the north line that you're talking about right now is like a four-foot-high chain-link fence, is there's not much of a break between the two. The city, what we've talked about so far is, we would fence the perimeter, and it would have a taller fence, that would be solid to give that break in the property. We don't know where we're going because of where we're at, but we have talked about doing like, the more larger buildings, high-density, more towards Walnut Lane, and then as you get back towards the R2, doing more like individual homes or lots, that would be, not lots, but individual buildings, where people could live in those, and making walking paths between them, and walking out to the road, and making it a livable space that's a community. And so we're aware of that. I can't give you the answer you're looking for tonight, that there won't be a 30-foot building in your backyard, because that's, we just don't know what we're doing, but we are aware of those issues. We realize that as we work to the northern part of the property, that it is getting into a more residential setting, and we're going to try and design a layout that will go from a higher density to a lower density as you get towards the back of the property.
Great. So, and the city's committed to going through the entire process?
Definitely.
They have to.
They have to.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
And again, if anybody else would like to speak on the Walnut Lane rezone, that's your chance.
Someone wants to support illegal zoning. Maybe someone wants to support...
We're trying to follow the rules.
Okay, then I will, anybody else?
If folks want to talk more about Walnut Lane, you can go out in the hall, and the interpreter will go out, and then Caitlin will go out.
I will go out as well.
And Joel. So if you want to go out and talk some more about it, that would be great.
Brady, did you hear that?
Sorry, baby.
We were just saying, if you want to talk some more about Walnut Lane, now we're going to close the public hearing, but Caitlin and Joel will go out in the hallway, if you want to go out, if you have any folks you're interpreting for.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 6:29 PM. Questions?
Thanks, Caitlin. In the codes, Nora, is there a specific definition of manufactured home as it applies to R4 or is it mobile?
There are lots of different definitions.
Cause there's modular, there's so many different types.
Yes, yes, there are. Um, and what we envision this as being a mix of different kinds of products at different price points. Um, the, the, most of the trailers that are there now, some of them are, um, we're not gonna kick people out of them, but we wouldn't want to put new people in them. Um, and if any manufactured or anything, if we decide to go that way, um, then those would all have to meet city code and, and building code and HUD standards and all those kinds of things.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, gracias.
Anything else? Commission members?
I'm just so glad that this is, after all this, all these years of trying to get something similar to what, it's taken a long time, guys. It's taken a long time. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm positive, I mean.
Forward a motion?
Will you put up the class?
I did.
Didn't I?
No. Oh, there it is. The other way.
There.
I motion to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council in ordinance 202001 on the requested rezone with specific findings supporting the recommendation.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next thing on the agenda, I would like to open a public meeting or, uh, a public hearing on the.
Where are you in one of those?
On the Community Rebuilds rezone.
Alrighty.
Is that you?
Yes, so we'll go ahead and get started. So this is on the agenda as item 4.1. So as we're moving forward, this is somewhat of a complicated expression between the rezones because we're doing two rezones of the same swap. So if at any point there's a bit of confusion, feel free to stop and I can readdress that. Um, so this is the Community Rebuilds Campus Zone Change Ordinance 202002. This item involves rezoning two properties that make up the Community Rebuilds campus, switching the associated zones and uses for each property to better utilize the properties and their location on the campus. Located at 140 East, 200 South as Parcel 1, as it'll be described, and 150 East, 200 South as Parcel 2, we'll describe them that way. Parcel 1 is a .27 acre, currently zoned R3 multi-household residential. The current use is housing for the Community Rebuilds called The Ranch, formerly The Ranch of Fandango, nightly rentals. Parcel 2 is 0.87 acres and currently zoned C2 commercial residential. The current use is additional housing for Community Rebuilds and also operates as Community Rebuilds office space within that building. Parcel 1 is directly south of Cali Cochita B&amp;B. Parcel 2 is the flag lot directly south within the city block of Wabi Sabe Thrift Store. So as you see it now, uh, do we need any clarifications on location?
Parcel 2 is the one that runs along Mill Creek Parkway Walking Path.
Correct.
Yes, there's a walking path.
Correct. Alright, so applicant Ricky Epperson, representing Community Rebuilds as owning entity of both parcels, is wanting to rezone Parcel 1 to C2 commercial residential in order to allow development for a Community Rebuilds office space on that lot that has easier, easier and better public access in addition to the housing already provided by The Ranch. As well as rezone Parcel 2 to an R3 multi-household residential in order to provide more affordable housing for Community Rebuilds and Vista volunteers, workers and interns utilizing that office space more towards that residential space.
So can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
Uh, the new bunkhouse that is there in the parcel 2, they, are they considering building more or just using the office as more housing?
Using what is currently there.
Thank you.
Right.
They may in the future look at some additional housing, um, but at this point in time, they're just, so they're, where their little offices right now is actually in, in, um, the commercial zone, but they have issues with fire access and handicapped access, handicapped access. So, um, this other parcel, if it were zoned commercially, it would be right in the frontage and you wouldn't have to drive or walk all the way back. And because of the configuration of the site, we're not talking a big office, it would actually be very small, um, because parking is a real limiting factor. So it'd be, it would be a small office.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have a, a draft site. Oh, well, this will explain the current zoning to proposed zoning in a visual format. And then in addition, we have.
Hey, go back to that, sorry.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Very big block colors.
Through a microphone, it's hard to describe, but this makes it a little bit easier.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so our next slide, this would be a proposed layout of what their office space would be on the current R3, so Parcel 1.
Okay.
If it were rezoned to C2, that would be the office space size and location most likely. Uh, the staff has worked with Kenny, their, the program's planner, so to speak, to develop this potential plan and draft. So at this point, we do have the applicants here, if we want to.
Usually after the public hearing.
Okay, okay, so in that case, if we do have any more questions, I can fill them now or we can close my presentation.
Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Okay, let's see, where am I? I would like to. Open the public hearing of the Community Rebuilds, two of the rezones for the Community Rebuilds and the time is 6:38 PM. And again, if you'd like to speak, I have one person with the yellow card that would like to speak. If there's anybody else out there that would like to speak, commission, please fill out a yellow card for us. Uh, otherwise, we can start with Kim.
That's me, but I don't have a.
Okay.
And, and she did, um, provide a, quite a bit of information, um, that I forwarded on to you this afternoon or this morning or whenever.
Right. Okay, anybody else out there?
Just write your name and then.
Yeah, thank you. We have it for the record.
Nate Reidman, I'm the direct neighbor to the south of the access. Um, I think the only concern I have is commercial creep, so to speak, and, you know, what the future might hold. I've got no issue with the Community Rebuilds and what their plan is, I like it. It's, it's pretty nice. But if there was another way to allow the office there, but not go full commercial to, you know, a potential new owner of that property in the future could turn it into neighbors I don't want, if that makes any sense. Other varieties of commercial zone would probably be fine, I don't know all the details, but that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and just to reply there, again, if we do this zone, you're right, we don't have any control over what might come next. Um, but Nora, you have.
So the, the allowed uses in the C2 zone are fairly limited, um, you know, that it's a lower intensity in general than the C3 and the C4 zone, so it's, it's one of our lowest intensity commercial zones, so it allows like offices and, and things like that. Um, right now it doesn't allow nightly rentals, but they may come back someday. Um, whatever happens on that site that's turning into commercial, if this is approved, um, the parking will be a real limiting factor for them. So I don't suspect that there will be much that's very big.
I'm already discussing parking with them.
Right, right, but they probably couldn't do much of a bigger building, anybody, for more intense business, because they need more parking. So by the very site configuration, it kind of is self-limiting.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak?
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 6:40. Counsel, comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd love to hear from applicant or.
Oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am, question?
Yes.
Oh. Well, come on up.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to reopen the public hearing at 6:40 PM. Please state your name, please.
Kim Pittit. Um, I have property across the street. Um, I'm last, my trailer's flat. Um, I s, uh, I did submit, um, some information earlier today. That Nora said that she forwarded on to you. But Nora also sent me, um, the group's analysis already, I mean, in other words.
The staff report.
Oh, okay, the staff report. And I noticed that, um, there was options, um, and the, one of the options was that, rather than changing the zoning from R3 to C2, that, um, that you could amend the R3 zone to permit small offices, something like that, which I think is a more appropriate situation, um, rather than, uh, set a precedent by, um, you know, changing it to the C2 than the next person. And we already have, um, you know, in 2009, just right in the same neighborhood, there was a push for the C2 rezone, uh, from R3 with the Nisoni property and the community did not want it and it was denied. Um, and like Nathan was saying, what happens is, is that you set a precedent and there's a lot of interest in the area. The Cali Cochita has been purchased by Curtis Wells and his wife and they've changed the use from, plus there was a rezone, um, that was appropriate for the, because it was a spot zone, um, and the city had requested it. But to begin that creep, uh, into the residential blocks, um, it just, it's a downward slope from there. I mean, you can say, well, we're gonna de-restrict this or we're gonna do that, but, uh, the next person who doesn't have any history with the area, you know, I'm 30 years in the area, um, they look at things from a profit perspective. And back in 2009, then city manager, um, Donna Metzler told me during this, uh, rezone period of the Nisoni property, that in fact, the city wanted the C2 zone to move into the blocks. And so, um, they, they had suggested that Nisoni, um, applied for a rezone, which I was completely opposed to, and like I said, it failed, but, um, it seems that the city may have an agenda, I mean, that's going back 10 years. So, um, they may have an agenda that ultimately, that that's what they'd like to see and I like to preserve my right as a property owner to try and dissuade that from happening. And most especially, this, um, the C2 zone has been located there, where, in the back, uh, the whole time, but when they developed the property, um, they didn't, they're, you're talking about not having fire access because 200 does not go through, but people can drive on it, but it doesn't go through, but the flag lot access between the Fandango and the, um, back C2 property should have been at least paved to, you know, for all this, um, activity that's back there and possible fire damage. There's just a gravel road that goes back there, it's very narrow and so I, I don't know how, uh, fire control would get back there. I know whenever you're subdividing a property or, um, that's what you have to provide is access and ingress and egress, so that it is C2, it might be well advised that that zone be downzoned because it's never, it's not really adaptable to this, the C2, um, build out to the property line and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple, um, she raises some, some good, really good points.
Nora, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. So I'm gonna close the public hearing at 6:45 PM. Thank you.
So, um, if a modification were to be made to the R3 zone, so that would be something that would affect every R3 property in the whole city. Um, so while that's certainly something that we could talk about in the future, this is, this application is driven by the, the property owners right now. Um, the city, I mean, 10 years ago, there's no probably, there are relatively few people with this current staff, certainly the panic mission, but the current staff that worked here 10 years ago and I, I can assure you, we don't have a hidden agenda. But it's, we're reacting to a request by a property owner.
And I am also worried about, uh, changing an R3 to allow small offices in it. That to me is a worrisome thing to put in a residential zone, so.
Aware that there are small offices in the R3 now though, I think that's something that, you know, there are a variety of uses all over town that don't technically comply with the underlying zone and this is certainly one to the point where I was like, wait a minute, I know of some offices in R3 and then had to double check the code.
Yeah, but so they're non-conforming uses that can continue to operate as long as they're not abandoned?
Yep, which is what I figured was the case, but, um, you know, it certainly is, I, I think small things like that are compatible with the residential, the overlay kind of area. But again, realizing when we rezone or when we change code, it applies everywhere that it applies. So, um, I have some questions for the applicant, if.
Sure, come on up.
Yeah.
You guys don't need the timers. And you are?
I'm the executive director.
Uh, Reid Saunders, I'm a planning Vista at Community Rebuilds.
Sweet. Um, I, I guess first off, why not C1?
Um, because we couldn't optimize the parking that way is my, is how we work together with the city on what was best. So, um, parking, we definitely want to make sure that, um, we own our impact and, you know, don't disturb the, the beautiful quiet, quiet neighborhood that's there, so.
Could you, would you mind pulling back up a, sort of a close-up of the property, Nora?
I've just, I've just parcel 1.
Yeah.
Uh, this is what we're looking for?
Yeah.
So we have nine spaces here, which is what is mandatory and pretty much all that we can fit in. We thought we had a couple snuck up there in the front, but they got taken away.
So, to comment on this, uh, the staff from Community Rebuilds that I've been working with, Kenny Gordon?
Kenny Fallon.
Fallon?
County planner.
Right, lots of names. Uh, but Kenny and I have been working through this potential layout since about October and because of the size of this parcel and with the objective which they're trying to reach, which to a certain extent would seem reasonable to manage the certain requirements that they would have to meet is about as tightly fixed between the landscaping requirements, parking, off-street parking requirements and then area requirements. So what you're seeing represented here with the different setbacks and colored lines is making this work about the only way it could, so there may be two or three alternatives to this potential layout, but.
C1 has different set, front setback requirements.
And the parking right now, uh, for the Fandango is six or seven out there right now, is that about right?
It's a giant, so depending on how you pull it in, you can probably fit a lot more, but it's, yeah, there's a lot of unused. But it's, yeah, there's a lot of unused space. I think, yeah, you could probably get seven. I don't know what's required for the ranch.
So it's nine with the ranch and then the additional use of the office space.
Okay.
So that, with an ADA space there at the top right, which isn't noted, but that is to accommodate the size.
And remind me what the ranch is being used for and what the plans are again? Sorry, there's just a lot between the two properties.
It's a bunkhouse.
There is, and I like to tell the story that we took a nightly rental and a second home off the market. And what we have created, of course, is our student housing. And also, the ranch is kind of a side program where it's short-term service worker housing, not to be confused with nightly rentals. But vistas, YGP interns, and then temporary staff or interns that we have that aren't necessarily building interns occupy that at an affordable rate with, you know, no lease requirements. So eventually, when, if this all works out and we convert the house that we've been occupying as an office back into a house, because it's too much office for us too, and it's not ADA compliant. Should I tell everybody we're breaking rules right now? I don't know. I imagine the ranch will be vista housing. That just seems to make a lot of sense, as long as we have vistas, hopefully forever. And then if we were ever to not have vistas or other interns from other nonprofits or organizations that needed housing, which I'm sure it will always be full, it could also be a waitlist for-- or homes for our waitlist when we're doing trailer replacement. So that's probably all it will ever be. Because even if we do solve the housing crisis, I think there'll be some stuff to rebuild one day. So we're hoping to be here forever, but yeah, that's what it's used for. And it works great.
And there's currently not a building where the new headquarters would go?
No, there's a couple trees. They're, you know, it's open for debate if they need to go or stay regardless. So yeah, it's really unused space. Currently, just to add the-- I don't know if you've driven-- we're kind of known as the big parking lot. So I guess we're currently not up to what standards the landscaping should look like. So I think it'll look a lot better.
And it's currently gravel, is that right?
Yeah.
Which compacted gravel is permissible.
Right.
And much better on the CO2 emissions, so.
Shoot, what was my other question? I've heard just from some members of the community that there was discussion of some sort of deed restriction. If you did get-- then that's not something that obviously we can hold you to, but which I think just be beneficial for us to hear about that as we kind of think about it.
Yeah, we're delighted to preserve this spot and the bunkhouse spot as workforce housing or, you know, people who live here in full-time primary residence. So we're definitely going to be adding a-- I mean, it kind of should be done anyways. You know, we have donors that helped us do everything that we do, and we'd like to protect that. So we're excited about that.
And if-- I'm just like speculating wildly, just so people who are listening or here can-- so say, you know, we're in the process of amending and looking at our overnight accommodations. Code citywide, we're not quite on C2 yet. But just speculating, if we did decide to go the overlay route for that zone, for example, would you all apply for the overlay to apply, or would you not to allow overnight rentals there in the future? I feel like that could potentially be a way that that might assuage some concerns about someday this turning into overnight accommodations. So--
Apply for the overlay.
So what the county is doing is they're saying, okay, here's areas where some-- at some point, maybe you might want to apply for the potential to rezone, is essentially what it is. But only if you're within that overlay district and the property owners apply to be within that, on that map. So if we were to do something similar at the city, there could be C2 parcels that maybe someone could apply to have an overnight accommodation there. And there could be C2 parcels where they cannot even ask for that to happen. And I'm just curious if, you know, down the road, you would find yourselves in that line of asking for that overlay to be there on the property to preserve the property value.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
There's no-- I mean, if we have fulfilled our mission-- I mean, I have vistas that come and can't find a place, even with the ranch--
Yeah.
--being full. So, you know, if we fulfill our mission and the ranch isn't-- if we're selling out, I mean, we can't take any money with us. So there's no asset, it's nothing to us.
Cool. Any other questions? Thank you, ladies, thank you. Discussion? Discussion? Any other questions?
So was the Fandango, or whatever it's called, was it just operating as grandfathered in, in an R3 zone, when it was an overnight?
Yeah, yeah, it was. And there are quite a number of those nightly rentals that are left over.
I wish there was a way to allow this without the rezone. It's unfortunate, because I understand every concern on the table. Jeanette Allison, do you guys have any?
I can totally see where Kim's coming from, because that was super contentious. And that whole area has changed from-- pretty just basically residential. And then we brought in a development that came in in that side of town, and they made a bunch of promises. And then they didn't live up to it. And then therefore, we didn't give them their-- they couldn't-- I think it was-- I think it was-- I can't remember. It's been 10 years since this happened. But the developers basically didn't live up to what they said they were going to do with the development. And then they ended up losing their shirts because they didn't-- Yeah, and I'm-- And I am a little concerned. I don't think an office is going to make a big difference, but it does open a big door situation.
Every rezone is an individual action, and it's discretionary every time. And the council certainly has the right to approve it or deny it based upon-- you know, they have a wide discretion with this. And you're just being asked to make a recommendation to them.
Is there-- I know this is all stuff that's been talked about, I'm sure ad nauseam with staff and with Community Rebuilds folks. But is there a way that there-- because this all contemplates a new structure being built. Wherever it ends up being, could that new structure-- I guess the reasoning for the new structure not being built on existing C2 is what?
Space.
So they don't have to knock down the house that's back there?
And that it's setback.
Right. It's not acceptable.
Yeah.
And it just seems like a strange-- like, that seems like more of a personal leak than actually what we're proposing. Like, we've taken a nightly rental-- I don't know if it's okay for me to talk right now.
That's my--
We've taken a nightly rental off the market. We've, you know, added more housing in this by zone. If you're on the property, it makes probably more sense. But it seems weird to have office, which is commercial, you know-- tug-tuck in people's houses. Because not only are people, I don't know, potentially not being on certain neighborhood stores, but definitely in the ranch, they're just like, where are you? I don't know where to find you. And we don't have that much office traffic. But when we do, it's just really awkward. And it also kind of-- I don't think it also, you know, preserves the residential vibe that's there as well. So that's if, you know, if this doesn't go through, that's what we're going to do. We're going to build an office there. We definitely can do that. But it's just awkward for everybody involved.
Is conditionally used nightly that they lost because they turned it back into residential?
Okay.
So it wasn't a nightly, it was just a conditionally used.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my thought is it's-- we are having a net gain of R3 at the end of the day.
Yes.
In a place where it makes more sense, where it's behind existing very much residential housing. And it does match with the adjacent zone with the proposed zoning. It kind of takes out that weird little hidden C2 that tomorrow, if Community Rebuilds went under and they had to sell that property, somebody could turn it into a gas station or whatever. I suppose not, not in that zone. But I think that's why, even though it is an up-zone, which generally I'm very cautious about with C from R to C, we are also, and can't forget, that we are doing a C to R in the context of this.
A big one.
At the same time, a big one, in a way that I think makes a lot of sense with where it is.
But why does it have to be a huge door? Why can't you just downzone and leave the R3 where it is? Why is it a trade?
We're kind of past the back and forth right now. And the planning commission is really deliberating amongst themselves, so.
Did you pass on the 14th page?
Yes ma'am.
We did, we got it.
We got it, thank you. Jessica, anything?
Yeah, I agree, it's a trade-off. And, you know, looking at it per square foot, we're gaining more R3 than we're losing.
Any other questions or comments? Jeanette, do you have anything?
I just always have this thing in my head that every time somebody buys a piece of property and they want to change it, they've got to look at the positives and the negatives of both those pieces of property. And to go downzoning probably would not be a good thing. I'm between a rock and a hard place on this, I really am.
I think, yeah. I think the context of it makes sense to me. You know, the more I think I've deliberated about this a lot and looked at it and talked to adjacent property owners and read everything and--
When did you talk to adjacent property owners?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we can't--
Ma'am, thank you. So please remember that this is just a positive or negative or no recommendation to city council. And so we can have a motion, make a decision. We can motion again if we want to change that from a positive to any other kind of recommendation to city council. And with only four of our seven here, we could also table it and put it off until there are more here on the council or on the commission.
But you also have to remember--
If there are more than four--
There's enough people.
Right, so those are our options tonight. So a positive recommendation, a negative recommendation, or no recommendation at all, and still send it to council, or we can table and bring it back.
Nora, is there a way we could make a positive recommendation recommending that city council have some other public input time?
That's really up to them.
So I said like--
It's just a part of your recommendation.
Yeah, it would just be a recommendation that they--
And then we would work with them.
Yeah.
Sure.
Where there is four, Nora, remind me, it doesn't have to be unanimous.
No, it doesn't, it just has to be a majority.
Right. Ladies?
I think this is one of those times when that change in what's specifically being requested makes sense to me. So I moved to forward a positive recommendation to-- of Moab City Ordinance 202002 to the city council based on the finding required by Moab Municipal Code 1704060, map amendment approval criteria.
And would you like to add in that to include the whole-- that council will open up a public hearing?
Yeah, I think with the recommendation that city council consider holding another public hearing before approving that motion, or that ordinance, excuse me.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, positive recommendation is unanimous. And then we have another agenda item that was added on at the back end. And that is the-- this is not a public hearing, is that right? It's just a--
That's correct, it's just a site.
Okay, site plan. So site plan for the Henry Shaw Hotel.
All righty. All right, moving along. I don't have the item number.
Just in terms of some background information on the Henry Shaw, they filed an application for a site plan approval just before the moratorium. So they are vested and allowed to continue with that application, even though the moratorium has been there and we no longer allow overnight accommodations, at least for right now, in this zone. But they were in, under the wire. They will have to provide the assured workforce housing that's required.
All right. The Henry Shaw Hotel, Level 2 Site Plan Application Resolution 65, 2019. This project is located at 836 South Main Street between El Charloco and the Silver Sage Inn. The applicant, Elizabeth Boone, from RANA--
She's here.
--is here tonight. And have submitted the final site plan for review and approval as a planning commission for the Level 2. This parcel is 5.54 acres in the C4 general commercial zone. The parcel is a flaglot connecting to Highway 191. The proposed project is a three-story, 112,922-square-foot, 211-room hotel. 11 additional units have been incorporated and designated as assured workforce housing within the hotel, individually accessed from the exterior. The project contains 247 parking spaces, including a variety of oversized bus and ADA-accessible, meeting the zoning requirements and ADA compliance. The hotel also includes an outdoor recreation area and pool. The lobby is entered from portico, where the guests have access to ground-level amenities such as sandwich shop, fitness room, and conference room. Stairs lead to the second floor of the hotel, where a breakfast room and patio overlook the pool deck. The third floor has a small lounge and outdoor covered porch. The exterior of the building is expressed as a series of volumes, which change plane elevation create a break in scale similar to that which meets the ordinance for large-scale developments over 30,000 square feet. The project is in compliance with applicable zoning and general plan. The application was filed prior to the approval, as Nora had mentioned. And I suppose-- I suppose we'll jump right into the assured workforce housing. So those 11 units, as they're seen here on the bottom-left representation of the site plan, you can see the distinction between guest room, and then there are small distinctions saying apartments, APT numbers. These units are represented at around 390 square feet interiors as expressed in the code in Title 1769050. Construction requirements, E, the average square foot of affordable housing unit shall not be less than 1,000 square feet per unit. This discrepancy between the plans and the code has been addressed by the city and communicated to the city council. This position is being taken by the city council and the city moving forward. So what that means is we're acknowledging in this site plan the discrepancy between the express square footage of those assured workforce housing units and then where our code is. And are moving forward, and I don't know if you want to speak on that position.
Yeah, I will. So we-- there's a minimum unit size of 1,000 square feet in our assured workforce housing ordinance. This seems like a really great solution, because people can actually-- who work there can-- Who work there can actually live on site. So we have mentioned to the City Council that we are going to come to them with an amendment to the assured workforce... workforce housing. You know, it's late. To have... to get rid of that minimum of 1,000 square feet and alter it. If that doesn't happen and if the council doesn't want to do this, then those rooms would turn back into guest rooms and we would be looking at another option for affordable housing.
So these are 394, is that what you said?
390 approximately. So those were the interior square footage that I personally measured and took. So what's expressed by the architect might be slightly different, depending on how they measure.
And there are four?
There are 11. This is just the upper section. So in the very bottom left, you can see the gradient shading. And we don't have the lower section within this slide, but we can get it if we need to.
How big is this room? I'm just... I'm just trying to visualize. I think it's about... this would be about half.
This is about 400 or 500 square feet.
I believe these measurements, it was something like the internal measurements of 13 by, I think, 30. And our architect can double-check me on that.
I was going to say, I bet you it's about as half.
Half this.
Half this. So, yeah, okay.
And that will conclude the presentation unless we do have further questions from myself. And then I guess we can have our applicant come.
Okay. I don't like the idea that we would be approving a site plan based on a decision that council has not yet made or may not make.
Yeah, why was it brought to us before that?
Because they're ready to pull the building permits.
No.
So... and it will... there will be a lot of site work, so they aren't going to come out of the ground for quite a while. But that is... it's totally up to you if you want to continue action. You will actually be looking at it on the 9th and then the City Council will be looking at it on the 12th. Because it is part of our zoning code, you have to make a recommendation to the City Council.
To change.
The change.
Oh, wait. We have to make a recommendation to City Council and change on the minimum size of the affordable workforce housing?
Yes.
Okay. I see what you're saying. Okay.
And I... again, I don't like the idea of moving forward with this site plan until we've made that decision and until council has decided.
It's a pretty big condition, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So do we have a motion? Can we table this?
I motion to table...
So that was a positive. Let's pull up. In your staff reports, there are the options for...
Well, I motion tabling conditional approval of a Level 2 site plan for the Henry Shaw Hotel, Action Item 5.1. I don't know if there's an ordinance that was with it.
Resolution 65.
Resolution, excuse me. 6529.
Until?
Until... Oh, the... I don't know how to...
Until City Council has had the chance to review it.
Yeah, until City Council has reviewed and amended the Affordable Workforce Housing Ordinance as needed to approve the current site plan.
I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are tabling this Resolution 652019 until City Council makes a decision on the Affordable Workforce Housing, Assured Workforce Housing. Okay, thank you. And... I think that's it. Any future agenda items?
Well, we do have the item of overnight accommodations is on the agenda.
Right.
Wait, what?
Jeanette and I are hoping... Jeanette and I are hoping to put that off till January.
I think we probably can because at the last... You know, the City Council just had a work session on this two days ago. So I did all this before that input. And based upon that input, I would suggest that we look at it in January. There's a lot of input and additional information that we need to sort out with the City Council that will make this better, but yeah.
And I suggest that the planning permission start meeting every night between 5:00 and 9:00, starting in January.
Sure. I bet. I bet you are.
I motion to ignore the chair, your honor.
So but... but really, future agenda items in January would be first thing first. You'd have to elect a chair, co-chair.
Right.
Hopefully fill the open positions and get everybody to all of our meetings.
And I just want to really thank both of you for your service. Jeanette's is amazing for hanging in so long and your institutional memory will be missed, definitely.
Yeah.
And Allison, you are amazing.
You are an amazing person. You're like the best. Tidiest ship in the city.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Was there actually an emotion?
There was.
Yeah.
Me.
I don't think there was a second.
I did. Jessica seconded it.
And I seconded it.
Or Jeanette seconded. Holy heck.
The last?
Yeah.
And in terms of replacement planning commissioners, I know that the mayor has talked to one person.
Right.
And she prefers to do it sort of word of mouth. So if you know anybody who you think would be good, have them contact the mayor.
Okay. I actually did have somebody that was very interested, but they live in that tiny little island behind the Mulberry Grove that is county and not city.
Yep.
Wow.
So, anyway.
Well, I think the county planning commission is also looking for people.
Probably. Maybe we'll just move over there.
Yeah, maybe they can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Is there anything else for the good of commission?
I asked you my question about the Four Corners thing.
About what?
Oh, and metering. I asked you about metering and got some info. But that seemed to be a big... a big topic of got to figure this out before anything's going to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good luck with that.
Was there another question, Kay? I'm sorry.
No, I was just speaking out loud. I had asked you the Four Corners question, just about what that was.
We hopefully will be seeing that at the January 9th meeting. They just submitted a revised set of plans to us on Friday.
Great.
So we're reviewing those to make sure that they've addressed all of the comments.
Okay. There's nothing else for the good of commission. I will adjourn the meeting at 7:18 PM. Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Thank you.
We can get all the rest of you guys here in January. You'll be fed, set.
Sad. I don't like this.
Sations or whatever. And happy holidays to everyone.
They're not happy.
Cocktails?
That's right.